That sounds good. Okay.
Okay.
Good evening. I will call the Missoula City Council to order for October 24th, 2022. If you'd please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Our first item of business is roll call, and I'll note that all members are present with the exception of Ms. Anderson. If we continue to meet in a hybrid format, Ms. Raybain, could you walk through how to participate in our meeting for remote participants?
I would be...
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I think your audio issue is back.
All right. So an update to the software did not fix the problem. I will change devices. Hang on just a second.
Okay. While you do that, I'll note for the record that Ms. Anderson is present.
Okay. Did that make anything better?
So far, so good. It kind of comes and goes. We'll let you know if it comes back.
Okay. The good news is there's no drip back here this week, so. All right. Let me share my screen. Folks, if you would like to join tonight's city council meeting and participate in the meeting, you can go to the City of Missoula's website via your favorite internet browser. On our page, there is a meetings button that is right down here below a photo. The photo rotates. And clicking on that button will take you to the City of Missoula's Meeting Video Agenda and Minutes Public Meeting Portal. This is where we host all public meetings for the City of Missoula in a one-stop-shop for people to find information, agendas, and videos, et cetera. So to join tonight's meeting, if you wish, if you're watching on MCAT and would like to join, hang on just a second. I've got a phone call coming in. From the Red Cross. They're very good people. So you'll find the city council meeting right here. It's the 24th of October. And if you click on that meeting button, a dialog box will open up. You'll have several options here. If you click on HTML or PDF, that will take you to the agenda. The HTML version will give you clickable links to all the documents that City Council is reviewing tonight, and the PDF will present you with a PDF document that is very, very long, but starts with the City Council Agenda. Either one of those works. The Agenda cover page just gets you the agenda. So if you click on one of these links, for example, let's go to the cover page. On the top of any public meeting agenda for the City of Missoula, you will find information about how to join our Teams meeting. Now, if you have not joined Teams meetings in the past, you might be prompted to download the Teams application or to join the meeting via your Teams via web browser. Either one of those is okay, but you're going to need to give Teams permission to access your microphone and in order to participate in our meeting and for us to unmute and for you to be able to talk to us. So I don't have specific instructions about how to do that because I don't know much about the devices that folks are using. There's different instructions, whether you're on an Apple or if you're in the Google Sphere, et cetera. So but suffice to say, you'll be prompted. You may be prompted to download the Teams app. You might need to give permission for Teams to access your microphone. That's how we can unmute you. If all this audio stuff and this computer stuff just sounds too complicated, you're not a computer person, we have a phone option for you. Or if you're struggling with your audio option on the computer, you can also call into this meeting. So I recommend writing down this phone number if you're attending, and you can call in. It's 406-384-6960. And Teams will prompt you for a phone conference ID. That conference ID is 387-736-445 and pound sign. Teams will tell you, but I will also tell you right now that you press star five to raise your hand to be recognized for public comment, and you can press star six to mute and unmute your microphone. If you just want to watch us, we stream these meetings live or on demand on that public meeting portal, and we also have, as we've been for years, available on Missoula Community Access Television on your Spectrum cable system at Channel 190. I think that's everything.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Raybain. We have no minutes to approve tonight, so we'll hold off on that. Next, we'll take public comment on non-agenda items. Is there any comment on items not listed on our agenda? Mr. Hunt?
Mr. Mayor, would this be an appropriate time just to say a few words about a proclamation you have coming up tonight?
That'd be...
Thank you. My name is Kevin Hunt. I live in Ward One, and I initially had planned to attend virtually tonight until I looked up the agenda and was just absolutely thrilled to see that tonight you're going to issue a proclamation honoring Maynan Ellingson. And I would just like to know that this may be the first time, and certainly to an extremely deserving person, but maybe the first time the council, twice in one year, has issued a proclamation honoring the same individual. Now, Ms. Ellingson shared that honor with Robert Campbell back in June, and there was a weak name for both of them, and it was unfortunately following the passing of Mr. Campbell. But I'm just elated to see that Ms. Ellingson will have a weak proclaimed in her honor all for herself tonight. She's a treasure. She's an icon of Missoula and of Montana, one of the co-authors of the most progressive Declaration of Rights in any state constitution in the United States, helped break the glass ceiling that kept women from getting law degrees at our own University of Montana. And I had the distinct honor of getting to know her when I was 15, 16 years old. And to say that she was an influence on what I chose for career and getting involved in political activism and practicing law, all kinds of things, would be an understatement. And I was so pleased to get reacquainted with her recently. And this is the proclamation issued last June, and, you know, it took me a while to catch up with her, and I finally got that to her. He was giving a speech at the University of Montana, or a presentation at the University of Montana about the CONCON, the Constitutional Convention. So anyway, thank you for doing this. I think it's just wonderful and certainly a deserving person. So thanks.
Thanks for your comments. We share in your elation. Any further public comments? Mr. Moore?
My name's, excuse me, Bob Moore. Been looking at the experience our city is having in police matters. Driving in Broadway today, hour ago, policeman's out chasing a young man on a bike. Don't really know why. Maybe he was stealing the bike. I don't know. But he's doing something not right. And then I looked at this paper where Mr. Burt is running for justice of the peace. He is very, very, very unhappy with what is happening in our city. I would like to suggest that you ask some of these victims, had they rather have enough policemen to stop these criminals running around this city? Or had they rather have a $19 million program quote improvement? I suggest to you that you might think that they probably would rather be safe and not be raped or not be violently beaten than have that $19 million, whatever it's going to be, $19 million, plus the interest on it for 20, 30 years, whatever it's going to be. Why the city council permits this kind of criminal activity in this little town is absolutely incredible to me. Both of these people running for justice of the peace have the thoughts on the amount of people who are being beaten and robbed and so forth. Why you had rather be spending $19 million plus interest for whatever years and not have some citizens protected in the city? Somebody tell me that sometime. I'll guarantee you, and I'll bet you get the amount of money you want to bet, these 14, 15 people that's themed in this article, October or something, had rather have enough policemen to stop this and forget about the $19 million.
Anyone else tonight? I've got one online comment. User identified as Dan. Dan, you should be able to unmute yourself and provide comment.
Yes, this is Matt Larson. I'm facilitating a comment for my friend Dan, but he's not right here right now, so I'll go for now. I've also experienced some stuff with the policing in this town. I think it's a huge expenditure, and I think our community is definitely looking at that amongst a housing crisis, amongst a homelessness crisis. And while we're dealing with that, we're out here buying private police forces to police the streets as well. It's absolutely ridiculous, and it's gotten to an absolute breaking point, I believe. But it's one of many, such as the water company, such as, you know, housing regulation. It's a lot of different breaking points at once, so it must not be easy to sit on the city council right now. But so it's commendable, you know, hats off to you all. But I think it's something that we should all start to address is the overall cost of this thing and whether we need all the absolute newest toys and newest things that come out in policing as soon as they hit the streets and especially when it comes from, you know, the sources that they come from, such as like the Killology Research Group recently and some of the other police spending that was happening at the sheriff's office for training purposes that was affiliated with some other groups. Anyway, we need to look at this as a community, and I have my friend Dan here would like to speak now.
Thank you, Ms. Larson. Dan, you can go ahead and get your name for the record.
Gotten to come to city council, congratulate all of you and talk to you. It's been a long time ago here. You're wearing a really bad sweater on your hair. And say hello and try and explain that all these people are coming to you out of a love for this home of theirs and to never forget that. I don't know if you remember me. Some of you weren't there. But anyway, I'm here right now, and I just wanted to say I hear a lot about police brutality and crime and, you know, a few other issues as well. And I also noticed that on Sunday, you know, on the headline of that Missoulian, for people who still read it, that, you know, city leaders were reflecting on this plan to end the homelessness in 10 years, you know? And that's coming right up, huh? Day after Friday or something, they say. And, you know, it's, they're all related, aren't they? They're all kind of connected. And so we gotta, you know, we can't half-heartedly approach any of these issues that these people are coming to you about. We gotta wholeheartedly do it or else, you know, it's just going to balloon into the next area of systemic problems. And I just, I really do hope that's at the forefront of your soul, well, hearts, and soon enough, because I do see there's still issues with the people. Good luck, city council, and once again, I thank you. I love you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else tonight? Seeing none, we can move on to our schedule of committee meetings. Ms. Raybain?
All right, just a moment, please. I found out that we're having problems with our streaming encoder, so I'm gonna go in here and reboot it and hopefully our live stream will work. So bear with me while I deal with this technical matter.
Ms. Raybain, would it be helpful if we recessed for a few minutes for you?
I just hit the reboot button, and it should come back on here momentarily for our folks who are trying to watch the stream. Meantime, folks can join the meeting and watch it in session, and I think I'm ready to do committee schedule now. So here we go. All right. Tonight, folks, city council is setting committee meetings for the coming two weeks. Next week is the fifth Monday of the month, and city council generally meets the first four Mondays of the month, so we don't have a council meeting next week. So we're setting up these committee meetings, as I said, for two weeks. Let's go and take a look at what the schedule looks like. I'm gonna share my screen here. Hang on. I'm gonna make my, got a little too big. All right. Here we go. Here's the committee schedule for the coming two weeks. The 26th of October, committee of the whole will meet from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. They will be considering a proposal to keep the authorizing campsite over Clarkford Lane open until May 31st of 2023. On the 26th, the Public Safety, Health, and Operations Committee will meet from 11:15 to 12 o'clock, taking up a variety of vehicle purchases and declaring a piece of equipment surplus. So we're looking at a tandem maxwell dump truck for the street division, 10 Ford interceptor or utility vehicles for the police department. 2023 is Suzuki cab over and chassis truck for traffic services. The fire department is purchasing an ambulance and a maintenance vehicle. And like I said, they also are asking council, the fire department's asking council to declare some of their equipment surplus. The Climate Conservation and Parks Committee will meet this coming Wednesday from 12:30 to 12:40. It's a short meeting. They will be taking up the Community Benefit 2023 contracts with Climate Smart Missoula and Home Resource. The Public Works and Mobility Committee will meet from 12:55 to 1:15 in the afternoon. They'll be taking up the Orange Street Underpass Project with the Montana Department of Transportation and a construction services agreement with Knife River of Missoula for the Rattlesnake Creek Crossing Drainage Stormwater Project. And finally, the Housing Redevelopment and Community Programs Committee will round out this coming Wednesday from 10, excuse me, from 1:30 to 3:00. They'll be hearing an update on recommendations from the Governor's Housing Task Force. Now, the following Wednesday, that is the 2nd of November, Climate Conservation and Parks Committee will meet from 9:00 to 9:35. They will be taking up the Mountain Towns 2023 Presentation. They'll look at the Climate Lens Resolution and the Westside Park LWCF Grant Award. And for those of you folks who don't know governmental jargon, that is the Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant that is being used to help fund improvements to the Westside Park. The Housing Redevelopment and Community Programs Committee will meet from 9:50 in the morning to 11:05 a.m. They'll be taking up agreements with the following community-based organizations for fiscal year 2023. The Missoula Economic Partnership is proposed to be awarded at $100,000. Arts Missoula, $202,350. The International Choral Festival, $12,000. Missoula Aging Services, $287,735. And Partnership Health Center, $35,000. And that is our committee schedule for the coming two weeks.
Thank you, Ms. Raybain. Are there changes to that schedule? Seeing none, that'll stand as announced, and we can now move on to our consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda were approved generally unanimously in city council committees, and we save a little time on Mondays by voting on those items as a package. Ms. Raybain will read the list of items allowed, and they're also on our printed agenda, and we'll invite public comment before we vote. Ms. Raybain?
Happy to do it. There's 11 items on tonight's consent agenda. As always, the first item is to approve accounts payable in the amount of $1,308,630.83 per checks that are dated October 25th of 2022. Number two is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a service agreement with Morrison Merrily, engineering for engineering on the wastewater primary effluent pump upgrade not to exceed $28,512. Number three is to approve and authorize the mayor to sign a professional services agreement with Water and Environmental Technologies for Tasks 1 through 5 for the Missoula Airport wells, those water wells, and preliminary engineering report. Number four is to adopt a resolution of the Missoula City Council of the City of Missoula, Montana vacating a public utility easement that's located in the Pleasant View Homes area. The first portion, 15 foot, is 15 foot wide by 205 feet long, and the second portion of the easement is 20 feet wide by 508 feet long, crossing lots M1, M2, M3, and M4 of the Pleasant View Homes, number five, Phase 6 subdivision, as recorded in the Missoula County Clerk and Recorders Office in Missoula, Montana. Number five is to adopt a resolution establishing a Vision Zero policy to work towards zero traffic deaths and zero severe injuries. Number six is to adopt a resolution to create a public utility easement and public access easement for 507 Simon's Drive. Number seven is to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Kelly Sager and Erin Montgomery to the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee for terms that begin immediately and expiring on September 30th of 2025. Number eight is to appoint Menadora LaMaster to serve as a regular member on the Affordable Housing Residential Oversight Committee. The term begins immediately and ends on May 31st of 2023, fulfilling the remainder of a vacated term for the community member seat. Number nine is to set a public hearing for November 28th, 2022, on a tax credit application for preservation, easy for me to say, for preservation and rehabilitation of the Union Place Apartments. So that's a low-income housing tax credit. We should have had that in the motion, but we have it in the title. Number 10 is to set a public hearing for city council on November 7th, 2022, on a tavern and casino conditional use application proposed for 3760 Mullen Road and refer that item for discussion at the Land Use and Planning Committee on November 9th, 2022, following the hearing. And finally, number 11 is to confirm the mayor's appointment of Mr. Larry Lambert to the Tourism Business Improvement District for a term that begins immediately and expires on December 1st of 2026.
Thank you, Ms. Raybain. I'll note one public comment online. Mr. Larson? Mr. Larson, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Sorry about that, having network problems. Yeah, this is Matt Larson, Ward Three. I just wanted to comment about the 3750 Mullen Road Tavern and also one other item, the pedestrian or zero traffic death stuff. You know, I don't know what the zero traffic death stuff is, but, you know, if we could add some sort of light or some sort of like better signage and stuff to the crosswalk coming out of the Orange Streets Underpass just near the freeway, I think that's one of the most awful crosswalks currently in Missoula. I think we could avoid some potential pedestrian deaths right there. It's, and if there was a light showing when a car enters into the far side of the tunnel so you don't get caught on the crosswalk, that would be awesome. I don't know if that such technology exists, but I'm hopeful that the solution can be found amongst all the great minds on the city council here tonight. I would also like to comment, yeah, on the casino that will be right near the Super Walmart, I believe owned by the Press Box guy. Shouldn't a study be done to be conclusive and all-inclusive about what's happening here when we're adding a whole casino facility right near our Super Walmart where we have a lot of traffic? And I think it's, it would be prudent, and it would be along the guidelines to do, to do a study maybe about this, like traffic studies, you know, low-income housing studies. I don't know, whatever. Saturation studies. I don't know. I just don't, I don't think it helps the neighborhood to add another casino in my, in my opinion, but maybe that's just me extending my opinion onto the neighborhood at large. I don't know if it particularly hurts it either, but maybe that's the advantage of doing a study before we flop a huge casino right there. But yeah, that's just my two cents, and I'm sure we can suss it out in public comments during the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Anyone else on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing then, I've had a request from Ms. Vasika to divide the question and vote on item 5.5 separately. Is there any council comment before we vote? Ms. Vasika?
I just wanted to say that I do understand the intention behind this resolution. I'm just not a very big supporter of road diet, so that's why I'm not going to be supporting it tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Nugent?
I would just point out that the item in regards to the Mullen Road Tavern and Casino is to set up a public hearing.
Thanks for highlighting that. Anyone else? Okay, we can have a roll call vote on the consent agenda as divided.
Okay. Let's do a vote on items 1, 2, 3, 4, well, everything except for 5.5. That's a lot easier way to say it. So on the bulk of the consent agenda, Basara?
Yes.
Carlino?
Yes.
Kontos?
Yes.
Jones?
I think you skipped Farmer, but I'm, yes.
I did. It's showing up, sorry, Sarah, your name is showing up out of alphabetical order, and I missed the opportunity to say Farmer-Jones, which I enjoy doing. Farmer?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
Yes.
And West?
Yes.
Would any of you like to change your vote?
I would like to vote. It's Anderson.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes. All right, that's 12 buys. And on item number 5.4, hang on.
Ms. Raybain, Ms. Anderson didn't actually state her vote. Ms. Anderson?
I wanted to change it to a no, or no voting to yes. I vote yes.
I wanted to change it to a no, or a no voting to yes, I vote yes.
Okay, hang on just a second, I think my software is giving me an internal service error here. Everything is not going smoothly back here tonight. There we go. All right. Finally cleared. All right, on item five point five, Carlino?
Yes.
Kontos?
No.
Farmer?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Nugent?
Yes.
Savage?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
Vasika?
No.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And Basara?
Yes.
All right. Any of you like to change your vote? Ten eyes and two nays.
And the motion passes, all those motions pass. We have no comments from city staff, agencies, the community forums, neighborhood councils, boards, commissions, or authorities. We do have two special presentations tonight in the form of proclamations, and I'm going to take them in the opposite order. So we'll take item seven point two first, first of all. Whereas forty-six thousand Montana youth will experience the death of a parent or sibling before their twenty-fifth birthday, and whereas many individuals feel misunderstood in the wake of loss, thinking that their grief is invisible to those around them. And whereas all bereaved youth need advocates supporting them as they navigate a world without their person. And whereas effective grief support can help mitigate against possible negative outcomes by fostering positive coping mechanisms and resiliency. And whereas recognizing this month serves to build a foundation of support for grieving youth, strengthening a national community of bereaved individuals, support service organizations, and community members. And whereas our community is committed to supporting one another, working to raise awareness of children's grief and ensure that no child grieves alone. Now, therefore, I, Jordan Hess, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the State of Montana, hereby recognize the month of November twenty-twenty-two as Children's Grief Awareness Month. Is there anyone in the audience that's here on behalf of this proclamation tonight? Okay, so we'll move on to our next proclamation. Whereas at age twenty-four, Maynann Robinson Ellingson was the youngest delegate to Montana's Constitutional Convention and was voted one of the top, or one of the ten outstanding delegates by those with whom she served. And whereas she was co-author of the uplifting and poetic preamble to the widely admired Bill of Rights that has for fifty years guaranteed equal rights for all Montanans. And whereas, as an attorney for the Missoula City Council, she helped shepherd groundbreaking projects whose lasting impact has been acres of open space, riverfront trails, and mountain trail easements. And whereas her work nationally, as a nationally respected bond council, made essential projects in cities and towns across Montana possible by writing the law that gave jurisdictions the ability to borrow money from the state at low interest rates. And whereas her wide-ranging philanthropic work, including leadership in raising funds for myriad projects, most notably the magnificent Missoula Public Library and the Missoula Art Museum, have made Missoula a more attractive, vibrant, and appealing community. Now, therefore, I, Jordan Hess, Mayor of the City of Missoula in the State of Montana, in the year of the fiftieth anniversary of the ratification of Montana's Constitution, hereby recognize the week of October twenty-fourth through twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two as Maynann Ellingson Week. And it, I want to first of all say that it is such an honor to read this proclamation. I have, I just swore my fourth oath to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the State of Montana, and it gives me a chill in my spine every time I do that and every time I think about that document, because it is such, the process by which it was crafted and adopted is really an embodiment of the best version of ourselves in Montana. It is, it is public service and public administration and governance at its finest, and I've been honored to get to know you, Maynann, over the years and to, to have this document as the foundation of how we do government. So, thank you. We have, I understand we have Carol Van Valkenburg is going to say a few words.
Maynann asked me to speak for her because she has laryngitis, and the reason in part is that we first met almost forty-five years ago when I was a reporter for the Missoulian and she was the attorney for the city council, and that's a long and interesting, different story. But the remarks that she asked me to deliver today are these. Dear Mayor Hess and city council members, thank you for this honor, and it is truly an honor, and thanks to my friends who have made the effort to give me this recognition. It is a privilege for me. The City of Missoula has been so very good to me over the last forty-four years. It all began in nineteen seventy-seven when I came to work in the city attorney's office shortly after graduation from law school. With a diverse, bipartisan, forward-thinking city council and two wonderful mayors, Bill Craig and John Tool, the City of Missoula made leaps forward in beautifying and revitalizing our community in the six years I worked for the city. Most notable, in my opinion, and with considerable opposition, initially from the business community and a couple of lawsuits, the city council successfully passed a sign ordinance, a landscaping ordinance, and a parking ordinance that Dan Lambros acknowledged a while ago were instrumental in making Missoula a better place to live and to attract business. During that time, the council also created its first tax increment district and combined that with special improvement district assessments to issue bonds to finance our first parking garage. And then there was the first open-space bond that allowed the creation of the Riverfront Walk on the south side of the river and the first conservation easements in our hills and set our community on the way to being a leader in protecting and enhancing the land, rivers, and mountains. Working on those bond issues exposed me to the practice of municipal finance and acquainted me with Dorsey and Whitney, which then enabled me to continue to work with city council and Mayor's Dan Chemis, Mike Katus, and John Engen over the next thirty-three years to accomplish many city goals and objectives. One of the last things I did for the city on a pro bono basis was to assist Mayor Engen and Ellen Buchanan and stakeholders in finding solutions for our beautiful Ogren Allegiance Stadium and Field. That was one of the more gratifying endeavors because it was important to Mayor Engen and to the hard work and vision of Hal Frazier and Playball Missoula. And finally, I am sure I have never enough thanked Mayor Engen and this council and the M R A enough for its commitment of tax increment funds to enable us to build the fourth floor of our library, which we celebrated earlier this night. I'm sure John Engen would say, if he were still here, Maynann never shied away from giving me her opinion or asking me for help on a project that she was working on. In closing, I have been profoundly, professionally, and personally enriched in countless ways by this city and this community. I am so grateful, I was fortunate enough to be part of this community, and I am grateful to my friends for urging the city council to issue this proclamation. And perhaps one of the best things that arose out of my days in the city attorney's office was meeting and becoming fast friends, I just read this, now, with a woman who is reading my remarks, with gratitude, Maynann Ellingson.
As well-deserved recognition for a lifetime of good work and service. Thank you.
Hey, there was never this many women on the city council when I served, so that's great progress. Thank you.
Thanks, Maynann. And that's it. That's, that's, we have no items for final consideration. We have no public hearings. We have no committee reports. We have no items of new business. I'll pass on communications from the mayor, and we can begin general council comments with Ms. Anderson.
Thanks so much, and I think it's very fitting that we, this week is Maynann Ellingson Week because it's also the week that is John Engen's birthday. And so there are not a lot of people who can say that they had such a long-lasting and robust influence on our community, and I think all of us who are still in the public service realm are thankful for the work that they have done, and we hope to carry on. So, thanks so much.
Ms. West?
So, I would just like to invite everyone to the West Side Park grand opening this Saturday from four to six P M. It's been a couple of years in the making, and I'm really excited that it's opened to the public. We're still waiting for one giant piece of equipment to get installed, but in the meantime, it's, it's worth celebrating. So, the grand opening event is on Saturday from four to six. We have some food trucks, we have the Hellgate Band making cotton candy, and we have Coach Shane DJing a hopefully costume dance party on that wonderful new rubber surfacing. So I hope to see all of you there in costume, dancing.
Mr. Kontos?
I'll pass, thank you.
Mr. Nugent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple quick things. It is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I just wanted to highlight that Officer Rebecca Potter and Officer Tyler Schwartz were the MPD twenty-two Domestic Violence Officers of the Year in awards given out last week, as was Angie Bakken from the city attorney's office was the Prosecutor of the Year. So congratulations to all them on their work in such an important field. And then, secondly, I'd just point out that our tax bills are available online, and people can go look for them. They'll be mailed in the coming week, I believe, is what the press release I saw said. But I did go look and did some math, and my tax bill last year was five thousand four hundred ninety-eight dollars and three cents, and my taxes this year are five thousand seven hundred sixty-four dollars and twenty cents, which is a four-point-eight-four percent increase year over year. And I bring that up just to highlight that the way we talk about taxes at city council and county commissioners and in the media really isn't telling the whole story of our tax bill. We get focused on the general fund and how it shifts, but there's a lot more that goes into the tax bill. So for the most accurate information, when you hear people talking about how much their taxes went up this year, mine went up four-point-eight-four percent, which is a far cry from eleven, it's a far cry from ten. So I just think that it's worth pointing out that we need to look at the full picture when we're having these conversations. Ms. Basara?
Thank you. I just wanted to remind council members and the community that we have the Jedi Community Network Summit coming up on October twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. On the twenty-seventh, at six-thirty P M., there's a public keynote speaker. It is James Whitfield, co-founder of Bee Culture. That's open to the public at six-thirty at the university's U C Ballroom. So I would encourage anyone who wants to learn more about these efforts in the community to attend that presentation. Thanks.
Ms. Carlino?
Yeah, just wanted to just say that I look forward to working with everybody on Wednesday to try and figure out some solutions to ensure that everybody at the ACS has a home to go to in a few weeks and work to come up with some sort of plan that works for every resident there to ensure that they all have housing in the future.
Ms. Jones?
Excuse me. Yes, I wanted to go a couple of weeks back in time and talk about October tenth, which was Indigenous Peoples' Day. I'm not sure who all was able to go to the celebration of the renaming, renaming of Higgins Street Bridge to Bear Tracks Bridge, but it was a wonderful, wonderful celebration. It was a gorgeous day before our winter weather hit. It's beautiful and sunny. The speakers were amazing. There were electeds, there were dignitaries, there were elders from the tribe that came down that said wonderful, wonderful things. And it was, although it was remembering a very harsh history, it was also very positive and looking forward in terms of healing and mending, and I think the significance and symbolism of renaming the bridge to Bear Tracks Bridge is, is a really good thing going forward. I wanted to say thank you to Dave Strohmeyer, who was instrumental in all of this, and especially Martin Charlo and the elders and the culture committee from the tribe were also very, very instrumental in all of the groundwork that was laid and the foundation for the decision as to what name and the symbolism behind the name. So I just wanted to call attention to that. I hope people have been able to take a look at the new plaques that have been put up down on Third Street and Higgins at the south end, southwest end of the bridge. It tells a lot of amazing information and history, and it's just a really positive thing. So just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Ms. Farmer?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to say to all of you that did work on the West Side Park, thank you for all the work that you did. I have the pleasure of living on Sherwood Street, so it's in my neighborhood, and as soon as the gate came down, and probably a few days before the gate came down, there were kids playing in the park, and it's been packed ever since. And it really just brings a lot of life back into the community, and it tells you how important parks are, and especially in that neighborhood. So thank you all for your hard work on that.
Ms. Jordan?
I'll pass tonight, thanks.
Ms. Savage?
Yeah, just another quick call out to the West Side Park group, and I know our own Heidi West had a lot to do with getting that thing moving and keeping it going, and through a pandemic, and it's beautiful, and I agree with Ms. Farmer, it is such an integral part of that West Side block, and so it's really great to see it with kids on it again. In that same note, I mean, I just wanted to remind everyone that the Northside-Westside Neighborhood Leadership Council is meeting tomorrow night from five-thirty to seven-thirty at Bird Street Bistro. There will be free Big Thai food truck, and we are going to talk about neighborhood issues. Also, there will be a second meeting to talk specifically about Northside infrastructure issues. We are nailing down a date. Hopefully, we will have a date by tomorrow that we can announce at this Leadership Council meeting tomorrow night. That'll particularly be specific to the Northside, but there are two opportunities for you to come and engage. Thanks.
Ms. Vasika?
Thanks, and I just wanted to remind everyone that general season for hunting has started, so be safe and careful, all you hunters and hikers and recreators out in the woods. Since we're not meeting next week for Halloween, I wanted to remind everyone to be, be safe that day as well. It's really dark outside now, so make sure you have, have ample lighting, either your porch light or a flashlight for your kiddo. I also did learn something and wanted to pass it on. Apparently, having a blue trick-or-treat bucket means that the child may or may not have, or may have autism, and so even if they don't say trick-or-treats, still give them candy, they might just be nonverbal. With that, everyone have a, have a safe next couple of weeks.
Thank you. And Ms. Cheryl?
Yeah, thanks. I was worried you were going to forget about me. And don't ask any child what their costume is, just say they look great. I learned my lesson when a child cried on my front porch and I asked what they were supposed to be, so I have not done that since. I am not, I'm not getting any commissions from this, so I just want to, I am reading this book. It is The Affordable City, Shane Phillips. If you have not read this book, I suggest you do it, even if you're only, make it through the introduction and the appendix. It will show you how complicated city policies are around affordable housing, but it also feels somewhat hopeful. I'm not done with it, but I would really hope that anyone watching that's interested in that topic specifically, and any of my colleagues that want to borrow it once I'm done, you're welcome to. It has been, I've spent a lot of time in the, the last week, my husband says, I keep driving every conversation back to this book and to affordable housing, so he's getting a little bored with it, but it is really fascinating, and it makes you think about how you, how, how we are pro-development, pro-environment, and pro-renter all at the same time, and just how incredibly complicated pulling those three things together is. So, and I'm happy to be back in Missoula.
Thank you, Ms. Cheryl. We don't have any miscellaneous communications, reports, or announcements, so with no further business, thank you for your service. We'll be adjourned.